Call the March 16th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the secretary please note the attendance that all commission members are here except for Commissioner Miller? I will take a motion for last month's minutes.
I have a comment.
Okay, unless there are any...
Paragraph C, the use permit for self-storage. I think you maybe should list that I also was among the opposed, since you did say it was two to four.
I support that change.
So noted.
You're right.
All right.
I will move to approve with the requested change.
Okay, all right. All in favor of the minutes as amended? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so ordered. It has come to my understanding that a longtime member of City will be retiring, leaving us. Joe Brooks has been our commission secretary for a number of years and has worked hard with us. I know that I'm gonna miss her. She's, you know, she bugs me all the time and, you know, things that I fail to do or respond to or questions. You know, obviously, she's been a great, great part of what we do here at the commission and we're gonna miss her hard work and know that she can't be replaced. And I just wanted to recognize you, Joe, for all of your years of service and just give my appreciation for that service and all that you've done for us. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, too, on behalf of the staff, I'd like to say that we're sorely disappointed that Joe is taking her retirement as happy as she is about it. We wish we could be as happy. And we're trying, but it's hard because we're not only gonna lose an excellent employee, a smiling face, but a friend. And she's gonna be sorely missed around the office. And every morning when you come in, you hear the cheerful "Good morning." It just kind of brightens your day, no matter what kind of day you have ahead of you. So, again, on behalf of all of the staff in the Community Development Department, as well as the other departments of the city, we wish her well and we're gonna miss her. Thank you.
Please come to work tomorrow.
I don't know after this, I'm not sure if she can, you know, go back to work tomorrow, right?
Yeah, she can't get through the door.
Since there's only one member of the public here to speak... I know, but you're a member of the public and you've come to our commission hearing and we have a space on the agenda just for you tonight.
And I've never known him to have nothing to say.
I think we should reserve a chair for him.
Next is disclosure of ex parte communications. I'm not really sure that that's required this evening since there wasn't really anything for us to discuss offline. So with that, we will go right into business, the work session on the design guidelines. And Brett is here after a long absence. And I will open the public hearing. Brett, take it away.
Thank you, Commissioner Lox, members of the commission. It's good to be back in front of you. We're excited for this application to move forward. Staff has been working on this for a number of months and we're excited to be done with the project so that we can use it and so that it can be a tool that we can use throughout the development process. And I wanted just to quickly go over what I'd like to cover with you guys today. The topics, I first want to provide a little bit of background and talk to you about the objective of this update and then briefly talk about the project's schedule and also point out some noteworthy revisions and kind of summarize the revisions for you. And then we can have time for questions and comments. You're welcome to ask questions at any time. This is a very large document. It's difficult to review this type of document all at once. You know, staff has been dissecting chapters at a time. And so we recognize it's a lot to look at. Hopefully, hopefully, this overview will help to kind of set the stage for your review and to assist you with your review. Just to provide a little bit of background, as many of you are aware, the design guidelines were approved in 2001 after an extensive planning process. The guidelines were brought to pass mainly because of the development boom that occurred in the late 1990s. There was a lot of concern over the quality development that the city was receiving. We did have a zoning ordinance that provided certain regulations, certain maximum standards, setbacks, height requirements, and certain development regulations. But the form or the architectural form of buildings or details associated with development weren't always adequately addressed. And so staff undertook this process of having a very nice set of design guidelines formulated. And they did have a consultant that assisted, but staff did a tremendous job on this set of design guidelines, as evidenced by the award that we received in 2001 for having the best ordinance or regulation for the year from the Arizona Planning Association. And so we know it's a good template. It's been successful. But we also know that over time, we can find maybe loopholes in the document or things that we weren't prepared to address. Also, with the development boom that we experienced in, you know, 2004 through 2007, we found a lot of new issues that we thought could either be clarified or addressed. And also, we heard from a lot of the development community, home builders, developers, things that they weren't happy with, subjective items that they wished were clarified. And really, the goal is to clarify and make things easier, speed up the development process for the development community. Okay. We're a little frozen here, but we'll see if that'll move forward here. As I mentioned, just real quickly on the objective here, we want to be able to provide clear direction and have innovative guidelines for the development community. We want to be able to have a document that's concise and efficient. We want it to be clear so that a developer or an applicant can grab a chapter and take that chapter and be able to know what the expectations are. And also, we decided that we wanted to kind of repackage the document using a different format and organizing the chapters a little bit differently. And hence, the portrait layout and a shorter number of chapters and a more simplified organization. Just quickly on the project's schedule. We released the draft to the public on March 10th and we anticipate that we'll have the rest of the month for that. We want to make sure that it gets out to all the local home builders and to all the prominent developers. We want to make sure that they have an opportunity to review and provide comments. And so that, we anticipate that the public review deadline will be Friday, April 1st. And then we're providing this work session this evening. We hope to come back in a month and have a further refined document for you for action recommendation and on to City Council. And we haven't received any comment yet from the development community and we will address those as they come in. Just to give you some more background on how the project began, staff has analyzed design guidelines of numerous cities throughout Arizona, as well as throughout California and Nevada. We looked at a lot of different cities just to see what everyone was doing. We found that many of the cities had provisions that we had already had. And we also looked all over in Arizona just to see what others were doing, to see how ours compared to theirs. We specifically spent a lot of time looking at Peoria, Glendale, Gilbert, and Chandler's design guidelines. They were very well organized. Some of those that are mentioned up there are very concise. Some of them are very short and well organized and contained a lot of the innovative design standards that we did. So we spent a lot of time on those four as we tried to decide what should be updated. We wanted to make sure that we kept what was good as well as updated, you know, cutting-edge type material. I mentioned the reformat. We were able to cut it down. Seventeen pages were deleted. It was information that wasn't vital and was redundant. We still want to make this as concise as possible so that it's easier to utilize. We also went through and evaluated all the graphics. Many of the graphics needed to be updated. We wanted to get local pictures, a lot of pictures from developments that we've had that have been successful. We tried to include there, too. We want the pictures to be able to help explain what we're looking for. And also, we were able to consolidate for the chapters. You probably noticed that the chapter on open space and public safety through environmental design and also Western Avenue Commercial and signage, those chapters were reorganized. And we wanted to have the chapters kind of stand alone. We wanted, if a commercial developer was coming into the city, we wanted them to be able to just have one chapter. We didn't want them to have to jump to another chapter on open space or something else. We think that a lot of the applicants just missed those chapters altogether. And as was mentioned, with the recent update to Article 7, the zoning ordinance, we felt took care of all those provisions. So we were able to remove that chapter as well. And I wanted to just quickly go through and provide a little bit of an overview on what we did for each of the chapters. In Chapter 1, we updated the glossary of terms, took out the ones that didn't need to be there, and provided some new ones. And also, we added a small number of graphics to help staff mainly understand certain architectural features. So not much of a change there. With Chapter 2, there were quite a number of revisions that were made. And I listed on here four that I think are noteworthy, that are worth mentioning. The first issue being architectural form. We have heard a lot from the development community, from the home builders specifically, on subjectivity related to architectural form. And in production home building, the common issues are garage-dominant homes and the design of entryways, where the front door is. And so we wanted to try to be clear as to what we expected from the home builders. And we tried to provide what we felt was a happy medium in this respect. And I'll reference a specific example if you have Chapter 2 handy. I'll show you where that is. On page 13 of Chapter 2, under Architectural Form, we have a provision under, it's B1, B that talks about the garage portion of homes. And staff has had a difficult time trying to, as many of the provisions are subjective, a lot of the home builders are saying that it's not clear exactly what staff expects or wants. They like to see numbers associated with regulations. And so we have proposed that we provide a specific number to how far a garage home can extend, how far a front-facing garage would be able to extend out in front of livable portions of the home. And we also provide provisions in the next Item C that includes provisions for providing architectural details out in front of the garage. And so we saw that as a way to allow homes that are, maybe have a little bit of a garage-dominant impact, allow them to happen by being mitigated through, you know, having low courtyard walls or other architectural features. So we're clearly showing that that type of feature will be allowed under these circumstances. Additionally, related to that, on the next page, Page 14, under Architectural Design, Number 2. Under D, we felt like we needed to clearly say, "The front door of the home shall be clearly visible from public view." A lot of the homes that we're seeing contained the front doors, which were significantly recessed around the sides of the homes. And so we want to be clear to the home builders, what is the expectation?
Mr. Chairman.
To the point of the three-car garage, Paragraph D, it kind of stood out to me earlier when I was reading this, minimum setback of two feet when you have a three-car garage. I don't know if it makes it more concise, just says it has a different setback than requiring it to be two feet back, you know? Could it be two feet in front of, you know? I understand we're trying to break it up. But, you know, I was flipping through the old design guidelines and I saw a picture of where the third-car garage is actually forward. And it looked great, you know? So I don't want, the way I read it is you're only allowed to have it, you know, back from the two-car portion of it, you know, further back from the street. And so I don't want to limit design guidelines to, you know, only having it, you know, further from the street. Is that tracking?
Chairman Lox, Commissioner Peters, I think the objective is to make sure, if you do have a three-car garage, to make sure that one of the garage faces is recessed from the other one, breaking that up. But what will help is with the previous provisions that we've discussed about, you know, even if they do have a three-car garage, it won't be more than six feet in front of livable portions of the home. We've also added provisions on Page 14, the first point. We've had a lot of, a lot of the builders have requested three-car facing garages. And so we're trying to allow for that, but we want to make sure that it's mitigated properly. And so we've added E, which provides that these three-car garage-facing plans will have alternative paving design elements, which will help to kind of break up the large expanses of concrete and soften that appearance.
Mr. Chairman, if we could just, you know, the way D reads to me is the third-car portion of the garage must be further back. And so, you know, I don't know if we can wordsmith that a little bit more just to say, you know, "Shall have a different setback than the two-car portion." And then that doesn't read as you're locked in to just being two feet further back.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Peters, maybe we could use the term "offset" instead of "setback." And that way, it could go two feet either way.
That works, too.
Very good comment. Thank you.
Right, if you haven't lost your train of thought.
I'm back. Just moving on, just quickly on landscaping, signage for model home complexes. We never had any standards. We have a lot of model home complexes throughout the city. And again, there's no direction telling the home builders what we expect. And you see, the picture up there shows a parking lot that we really liked. It had trees and landscaping. And we're trying to let them know upfront what is expected. These model home complexes can be there for a number of years. And we've been administering them and enforcing this type of design. And we wanted to make sure that they know what's expected upfront, that we do want landscaping in the parking areas and also that the landscaping that they utilize is efficient, that they're using drought-tolerant trees and they're limiting turf, they're being efficient with the areas that they do provide in turf, and also that they provide three significantly different front yard landscape options with at least one that's low-water option. And the last thing to note on this chapter is just that we've also added a section on solar panel design. A lot of cities are adding these and for the reason that we want to ensure that the design is done right upfront and with a little forethought and planning, these solar panels can be efficiently located and situated into the housing. So we are providing some direction as to how those panels should be connected to the homes. So moving on to Chapter 3, a couple of things to mention. One of the things, probably the biggest thing that we learned from the recent multifamily development that we've experienced over the past five years is just that we need to be sensitive adjacent to residential areas. And wanted to specifically note, on Page 16 of Chapter 3, we have added provisions that, such that multifamily sites that are adjacent to residential areas need to have lowered or single-story elements adjacent to those. And this picture on the lower left shows that. The residents of this Centerra community were much more happy with this development when they saw that these buildings were stepping down and made for a better transition into the residential development. So we've clarified that that's something that they need to address when they're adjacent to single-family developments. And just another, a small one that I wanted to point out in regards to screening. You can see the picture there on the right. That small screen wall is covering an air-conditioned unit. We had a few developments that developed finished construction and then during inspections, we find that they have mechanical equipment, you know, in various places throughout the development. And, you know, they didn't realize that all equipment needs to be screened from public view. And so we have added things like provisions. There's one on Page 13, under utility and mechanical equipment, just making them aware that all the equipment needs to be fully screened from public view, whether it's ground-mounted or on the roof. And just showing them what a good example would be, something that fits in and you don't really see that it's there. But those were two topics that we have had with multifamily developments throughout the years. Moving on to the commercial chapter. I mentioned that the chapter was reorganized and so it includes all aspects of commercial development. But there are a few things that we thought needed to be addressed. And one of those was to be able to provide appropriate linkages for pedestrians to the commercial areas and throughout the commercial areas where appropriate. We have had instances where commercial development does not want to tie into a residential development for various reasons. And the language that we had was subjective. We didn't have the ability to require a connection if it made sense, if it mutually benefited a residential and a commercial development. So we are noting that, that where appropriate, we expect connections, whether it be walkways, common landscape areas, or even unfenced property lines. Also, the third bullet point up there, the update designed for parking lot landscaping has probably been one of the bigger items that staff has had a difficult time enforcing during the site plan review process. You know, typically, the developers want to minimize the amount of landscaping they provide in the parking areas. And we want to see as many trees and landscaping as possible. So we clarified exactly what was required. We left out some of the standards that weren't being as enforced and made it clear exactly what is required. And that starts on Page 6 of the commercial chapter. But we wanted to make it clear that in commercial areas, that parking lots need to be efficiently designed and that they need to contain a sufficient amount of landscaping, landscape islands spaced appropriately, as well as providing shade trees and also providing walking paths or sidewalks within the landscaping to the, just to help the pedestrians get to the building entrances.
Brett, you mentioned that you are eliminating some of the old provisions that were unenforced. Can you give me an example, two of, by that?
One that comes to mind is, I think it's Page 6. Yeah, Page 6, Number 7. This is a new standard. We're saying provide continuous landscape planning strips. We're now saying every third row. Before, the requirement was every other row. And we, I don't think that we ever got that. So we're thinking this is a more reasonable expectation. The next one is a new section for parking structures. We don't have any guidelines for parking structures. We anticipate that we will have these types of buildings being proposed in the near future. We've seen development plans for them already. So we will have innovative standards to accommodate those and to ensure that they'll match the building, the primary buildings on the site. And also, design provisions for the ground floor to make sure that it looks like a nice building rather than just a conventional parking structure. Let's see, the other thing to note is Western Avenue Commercial. I mentioned that they were put in the commercial section. That section was summarized. Many of the guidelines that were provided in that section were related to historic preservation. And there was a lot of language in there that we didn't think was vital or that wasn't providing a specific guideline for them to follow. There was a lot of background. And so we summarized that and included that in this chapter. We also kind of reorganized the boundary of that and provided a new map for that. So we proposed to eliminate the shopping center that's at the northwest corner of Western and Litchfield Road. And, you know, the thing that we were struggling with is it's really conventional, an older-style development. It doesn't really adhere to the Western Avenue regulations. And so we didn't want to have regulations that spoke to preserving the architecture or preserving the design. And also, if a new development was proposed on that site, we don't believe that they would propose to be building up to the... we don't believe that, that they would propose to be building up to the Litchfield Road lot line. Litchfield Road is, is a much different type of street than, than Western is. And so we, we thought that it was appropriate to, to redraw the boundary there on that one. Continuing on to the last chapter, industrial slash employment. Formerly this was referred to as business park. We want to be clear that this chapter covers business parks. It, it would cover employment campuses and also larger industrial developments. One of the, the areas in the design guidelines that we didn't have sufficient information on was the larger industrial developments, larger buildings. And recently the city has seen four or five large industrial buildings that have developed over the last four years. And so we were able to, you know, determine the type or the level of architectural detail that, that was reasonable. I think in the past, when we saw Sungkor's first development, the large industrial cross stock development, I think staff kind of expected that, that commercial level quality standards would be enforced on, on this larger building. And, and, you know, we, we came to realize that it's, it's a much different type of use and a different set of standards are, are warranted for, for those larger buildings. And now that we've gone through, you know, about five of these large buildings, we, we have been able to craft some language to, to cover that architectural control. And just wanted to refer to real quick is on page 11. On chapter six, which, which outlines what is acceptable. And, and I think this is, this is kind of relaxing the standard that we had before. But I think now that we acknowledge for these larger buildings, as I said before, a, a different type of standard is, is needed for these, these large warehouse and industrial buildings. But we have added additional architectural controls. Noted up here, building entries. We have provisions in there to require the building entries in the corners of the buildings to be, to contain a higher level of architectural detail. And to help with that, kind of dress up those, those types of buildings. So let's see. And also to provide, to make sure that there are sufficient windows in those types of entry, entry areas and corner areas. Also, one that we think the development community will like in regards to cargo and storage containers. Page nine, under loading and outdoor storage. Bullet point E, we do have provisions that will allow cargo containers and storage containers as long as, as they are fully screened from public view. And we've seen some larger retail users like Target, for instance, in newer buildings that will, they'll build large screened areas to accommodate those types of containers. And, you know, we feel that if they're fully screened from public view and they're, they're adequately designed, then they should be able to use those on a recurring basis. And also in industrial employment, there, there are many more provisions on efficient landscaping design. We wanted to make sure that these employment areas had efficient open space areas for the, for the employees to utilize. But we also wanted to make sure that any grass areas were efficient, that they were limited and, and that weren't excessive. We also have provisions to ensure that pedestrian connections will be provided throughout these larger industrial developments, these larger product, projects that have multiple buildings. So that is kind of a quick overview of some of the, some of the highlights. And we can stand for questions. We can accept comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess we'll start Commissioner Short.
I'll start at this end tonight. First of all, I would really like to commend you and all of the city staff. I think your hard work, your creativity, your desire to make this document more developer friendly, more business friendly, more user friendly is, is very evident. You guys did a terrific job. I have a lot of comments on mine. Most of them are really minor, so I'd like to just give you my copy at the end and ask you to just consider those comments. But I do have some kind of general conceptual things I'd like to bring up and then just one specific item. I think in reading through it, there are some things that come through very plainly, but maybe not quite as consistently as I for one would like to see them. But I know there are things that this city stands for and considers important. One of them is energy efficiency. In some sections, we talk about the use of building materials that are more energy efficient. Oonings, mature trees for shade. But it seems to me that that's a concept that ought to be applied, whether it's a single family dwelling, whether it's a multiple family dwelling, whether it's retail, commercial, or whatever. So I would like to see that kind of energy efficiency, energy saving concept to be sure that it's just consistent throughout the document for all levels of building. Another one is water conservation. And again, there's some items in there that have to do with water features. I'm not sure, I think we should be encouraging water features. Actually, I think I'm pretty sure we shouldn't be. But if we do, anytime we mention water features, it would be nice if we could consistently say it should be built in a fashion that reduces evaporation and increases water recovery, just so that we kind of make our stand clear. The same on irrigation. We talk about irrigation, but I didn't see any place in there where we said the city would like to encourage people to use drip irrigation systems rather than spray or flood irrigation systems so that we're conserving water by just watering individual plants. So again, those are sort of tenants of the city, tenants of the way the city wants to grow and the quality of life that we want to project into the future. Another one is open space and the idea of encouraging, no matter what kind of development you have, to have trail systems, to have parks, to preserve open space and to connect those wherever we can. I know we've talked in the past about the concept of some kind of connected trail system in the city. And it seems to me that this is a place where we can encourage that the pieces of such a trail system might be there. And probably the last one is in talking about plants, landscaping or plants, I would like to see us consistently encourage the use of native plants that are adapted to this area and that are low water use, whether it's landscaping a parking lot or landscaping a yard, whatever kind of development we see, to the extent that we can do that. We preserve our natural environment that we pride in this city. We also reduce water use. We maintain more habitat for the animals that we do like to have around us. And I think that those, those to me are kind of tenants of the city that I see all the time and feel all the time. And I, I think that with a little bit of work, we could be really sure that those are very consistently applied throughout this. I see them there. I just want to make sure they're there. The one specific comment I'd like to make or ask you about is on page eight of chapter two, where it talks about grass. And it, it says that the grass, predominant use of grass is prohibited or essentially allowed up to thirty percent of a lot size. And I'm thinking about some of the small lots and large houses that I see around here. And I'm not sure there's much more than thirty percent of a lot after you get the house built. And I was wondering if maybe your intent there was thirty percent of the available landscape space on the lot or whatever. Or did you truly mean thirty percent of the whole lot? I, I would prefer to think thirty percent of the lot you could, landscape could be grass, but not the whole thing. So that's, that's a question.
Chairman Lox, Commissioner Short. It's my understanding that this, this specific language was proposed to us from our water conservation expert at the city. And it, and it's taken from, from, language from the state. But I can, I can get additional information as to what is meant by that total lot. So we'll do some additional research.
I think we just want to be careful so it doesn't sound like we're proposing that a lot of grass or a lot of sod is the way we want to go.
That's right. We wanted to, we recognize that property owners have, have certain rights. And we wanted to be able to recommend as much as possible. But, but it would be a good practice to, to explain exactly why we're proposing this. And this, this specific provision is under model home complexes because we're hoping that if the home builders are modeling, you know, a low water or a, a good design, efficient design, typically what's modeled is the majority of, of the built environment. So we anticipate that that will, that will be the case.
And once again, I just want to say, give you my great appreciation. I think you guys just did a crackerjack job on it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. First of all, I wanted to thank you for reintroducing, reintroducing me to the glossary term fenestration. That's a pretty cool word. Sexy word. Secondly, I was wondering, do you have a redline version? So we could compare and contrast these two.
Chairman Lox, Commissioner Slosser. We have a number of redline versions. There were, there were so many changes to the document. It was, it was very difficult to show what was deleted, what was added. It got to be so confusing that we ended up just saving versions. So we have older versions. We have, we've identified some of the things that were, were modified or deleted. But it was, it was too difficult for us to show track changes on the significant number of comments, so.
Okay, no problem. And lastly, you mentioned that you've put this out to developers and builders and whoever else might be interested. Are they supposed to submit something back in writing to you with comments? And if so, are we going to get a copy of those prior to the next meeting?
Sure, yes. They are, they are asked to provide comments. We, we did provide, we, we sent a notice out to the Development Advisory Forum. We also sent a notice out to, what was the other list called, Joe?
The notify me list that we offer.
So the people who have signed up to get any, any, any new news from the department. So we've sent it out to those organizations. But we have identified there are still some home builders who, who weren't on those lists for some reason. So we, we're extending the review time, making sure that everyone has the document. But yeah, there is, there is a language. They're asking for written comments to be submitted. We're asking that they'll be submitted by April 1st. And we can compile the comments that are received and include those when we come before you.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams. I absolutely agree with everything Commissioner Short said. I would like to add though, that I would like to see right up front in the introduction a statement, a strong statement, that the city would like to encourage energy efficient and environmentally sensitive design. And I have just a little one nitpicky note. Chapter five is great, but every page on the header on chapter five is labeled chapter six.
You, you caught it.
I was a test.
And thank you very much. Nice job.
Thank you.
Echo everything the commissioner said so far. I guess if we're wordsmithing a little bit on chapter, on page two of chapter two, paragraph H. I assume the word foot or feet should be included in that first sentence. It says, "Corner lot shall be at least ten wider than interior lots."
Thank you.
That's it. I, you addressed my earlier question with regards to clarifying the garage door issue. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Key?
Thank you. I too want to echo the, my fellow commissioners' comments about the undertaking that you guys took on. And having been involved in this with the 2001 process with a consultant, I know how involved this is. And not having a consultant on board and doing this all yourself, you really should be commended on, on a job well done. And I think you, you've done a, a pretty good job in achieving the objectives that you originally set forth. I mean, down to as, you know, some of the kind of arbitrary things that people would take for granted, like the formatting. I always hated the landscape format. So I think the portrait is, is just a lot easier to, to administer and to, to follow, I guess, from, from the other side of the counter. I also wanted to commend you on the update to the pictures. I thought that was a really good, did a really good job in doing that. It provides, I think, a better representation of local development patterns than, than what was found in, in the previous version. So I thought you did a good job with that. And got a couple of questions. I've, I've got some comments and I'm still kind of going through a detailed review, so I'll, I'll send you those comments later. But one that I wanted to discuss, and I don't know how much we want to get into discussion on this tonight, the issue of parking lot design, as long as I can remember, has been an issue in terms of understanding it from the developer's side and enforcing it from the city's side. And so the, the requirement, the shall requirement of providing the series of smaller lots has always been a contentious issue. And in my experience, I know that there are some good examples out there that are not necessarily in compliance with that standard, but they are deemed good examples of parking lot design. So I didn't know how strongly we wanted to have the shall in that particular provision. And you don't necessarily have to answer that tonight. It's just kind of something to think about. But I wanted to maybe just kind of put that out there. And I know you guys have probably had discussion about this one. I don't know if there are examples out there that you can think of in Goodyear that absolutely adhere to that standard. I think that's probably the, something to think about. And then the other question I had was kind of along the same lines. Will all of the shall requirements actually be enforced a hundred percent? Is there going to be any room for negotiation or for, or any exceptions in the design review process? Will that, how will that be handled? How will that be administered? I guess those are kind of my only big, big picture comments and questions for right now.
All right. I don't, I, I would like to respond to the, to the last question because I think it's a good question. The intent of, of staff, when we redrafted it, was to make the shells, shells, or make, or I should say, make the shoulds shells where they are, where we want them to be shells. In other words, what we confront a lot of times is the design guidelines would say, you should do this. And we take a position that you have to do this. And the developer, contractor, designer comes back and says, well, it doesn't say shall, it says should. And so even though it sounds like it's more rigid in its approach, it's really intended to be more clearly communicative of what we want. That this is one that we're not going to give in on, where this is one we're going to, you know, dig our heels in. But the, but I think the, at the same time, the approach would be, this is what you are required to do unless you show us that you can do something that isn't matched the shall, but is just as good. And I think that's where at least our intent would be in terms of enforcing it.
So it goes back to the spirit and intent.
It shifts, it kind of shifts the burden of responsibility from us defending a should position to the designer kind of defending why it shouldn't be a shall. I didn't mean to get you all mixed up with the shoulds and shaws. But that's been a, a real underlying focus of what we've been trying to accomplish. Because I know the planners on the front line, when they're dealing with the designers, it's, you know, there's just a tendency to kind of push the limits. And, and at times it's a real struggle. And we're hoping that by changing some of these words, it's not like minor changes, but it puts us in a position, a better bargaining position or a better leverage position.
One more question. I'm sorry. Just one more question. I know that you addressed in this update the provisions for residential solar. Had you talked at all about provisions for solar on an industrial basis? I know that Goodyear started to see applications. I'm dealing with some in some other cities and counties. And the problem that we're seeing in those other cities and counties is a lack of zoning ordinance and design guideline provisions for solar farms and facilities like that. Had you talked about incorporating design guidelines for facilities like that? Or is that going to be purely a zoning ordinance? Regulation, I guess.
Chairman Lox, Commissioner Keith. We have not talked about it extensively. We felt initially that what we, at least what we've been seeing so far are rooftop installations. And where they do rooftop installations, they, and I don't know if it's just because we're lucky about where we're situated on the planet, but we've been fortunate that they don't have to be angled up as nearly as high as maybe in southern, some other latitudes. And so the panels pretty much stay below the parapet walls, particularly if there's our existing mechanical equipment, because we've already made him screen that. And so that really hasn't been much of a problem. But it's a good point, that it may be something that just because it hasn't been a problem, doesn't mean that it couldn't, that someone couldn't come up with an idea that we wouldn't like. So I think that's a good point, that's something we want to look at. The, the other, we are starting to see, and had a contact just today, about a, a solar field in association with an industrial use, where it would be on the ground. And in that kind of case, you know, we would look this, hopefully, that it'd be in a location where it would be screened, or at least in a location where it wouldn't be obtrusive. In other words, you wouldn't want to see it right out in front, maybe of the, if it's an industrial that has a landscape or parking area right out in front, we wouldn't want to see that necessarily. But, but we also have seen some other proposals where they already have parking stro, parking canopies, and they want to put them on the top of the parking canopies. And in that respect, that, we didn't really have a problem with that, so. But it is something we could touch on in, in the design guidelines, so I appreciate that comment.
Yeah, because the applications I've seen that are either in the discussion stage, or even at the point of being submitted for consideration in other jurisdictions, are truly solar fields, solar farms with freestanding facilities. And the, the questions come up about fencing, you know, is chain link permitted? Is block wall required? Is landscaping and parking and improved surfaces? All that fun stuff comes into play. And, and I, from what I've seen in a couple other municipalities, they've taken the approach of requiring the most intensive industrial zoning district, which isn't really necessarily commensurate to the level of intensity that you really get from, from that kind of development. But just, again, something to think about, even though we haven't gotten an application for that, I'm sure you're going to be getting one soon.
Commissioner Keith, as, as you know, the way our ordinance is set up, it requires a special use for, for a generating facility. What we talked, we were talking about a few minutes ago was accessory uses, where the power is being provided for use on site. What you're talking about is basically an electric energy, electric generating station, where it's going to be generated for the sole purpose of selling back to the grid. And those would require special use. We did set it up, though, I believe it's a special use in any district, so we don't have to change the underlying zoning necessarily to industrial just to accommodate the use. So I think that's not going to be a problem. And since it is a special use, we do have the opportunity to somewhat negotiate the design of the facility as we go through the special use process. But at, at the same time, if there are some minimums that we're likely to require, it might be a good idea to have those out in front, so the expectations are known ahead of time, so.
Thank you.
And also to, to sort of to follow up on that, as it relates to parking structures, I know that, that there are some innovative uses of, of solar on top of parking structures in order to, you know, provide some environmental technology, you know, there and, and benefit. So I don't know if, if there can be some sort of provision attached to the parking structures to, to allow for those accessory uses, assuming that they, you know, for the benefit of the parking structure's owner.
When you say structure, are you thinking parking structure, or are you talking a parking canopy? Just for my clarification.
I don't, and maybe it's a tomato-tomato here, but, you know, we're talking a multi-level structure that, you know.
Okay, multi-level is, that's a parking garage, parking structure.
Right, parking garage, I mean, sort of that, not just your, you know, open area, you know, parking lot.
Right.
Yeah, something more, you know, solid than, than just that.
Gotcha.
And my only other, you know, nitpicky thing is on page twenty-one of chapter four, under walls, J four. That last sentence, "Chain link or similar metal wire fencing with slats is prohibited, including barbed wire, razor wire, or razor ribbon." I just don't think that makes perfect sense. If we're going to, is, is the slats barbed wire, razor wire, or razor ribbon? It just doesn't quite flow to me. And so I'm, or are those things also prohibited? I just, you know, like it to read just a little bit better. Other than that, I'm, I'm, I'm good. Does anyone else have any other questions or comments for?
Chairman Lox, I, I would just like to echo some of the commission's comments on the fine work that Brett did on it. He's the lead on this project, and has spent a lot of time in the trenches digging for this information, and he did a good job in pulling it together and organizing it. And I, I wanted to recognize him for his efforts as well. Thank you.
Thank you. There is a member of the public who, who wishes to, to speak. If you would approach the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
Peter Fine, 354 South 166th Avenue, Goodyear, Arizona, zip code 85338. Are the current guidelines and new guidelines in Potentia available from download from the Goodyear City website? So the public may comment in the event they do feel?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you.
Close the public comment.
Gary Gelsner, citizen of Goodyear, I couldn't resist. I, I wanted to follow up on Commissioner Short's comments. In the previous, my whole experience has been on turf being thirty percent of landscapable area. And that is the way architectural guidelines have been written in subdivisions. Pebble Creek, for example, only allows that. So, so I wanted to make sure that, that, that has always been the standard. It's whatever is left after you, after the footprint of the house is taken, taken out. The one thing I, I don't know if, I didn't read it as carefully as I should, since I was reading it online, but I wanted to ask, is there any provision for artificial turf being substituted for landscaping, you know, for grass? And is that, and if artificial turf is used, would it be subject to the same thirty percent ratio of, of use? So, thank you very much.
Thank you for, thank you for your question, private citizen Gelsner.
I'm not sure, I know the answer, I'll ask Brett to, to double check, but I don't think there's anything in there that would prohibit the use of artificial turf, and it would not be counted as turf in the sense of the thirty percent.
But, but shouldn't it be counted as turf? Because it's a lustrative. I mean, if, if you have somebody that has turf and does a hundred percent of their landscape area with turf, that gives the illusion that they have grass for a hundred percent. And I don't think we want to encourage that.
I, I guess from my, from my narrow view, we weren't worried about the illusion. We were worried just about whether it used the water, so I, I, I understand.
That's in its reality, and if somebody sees.
I understand, I understand the point.
You know, a lush lawn that looks like it, it's from Illinois, they may want to put one in.
No, I, I, I understand, I appreciate the point, I just, we hadn't considered that. And I would say that there are other initiatives ongoing behind the scenes with respect to energy efficiency, with respect to water conservation. And so they haven't been as fully developed as they need to be yet, but they'll be brought forward at, at the appropriate time. So I, I think we're still heading in the same direction as the commission desires. It's, some of it's just not done yet.
Thank you. All right. With that, I will close the public hearing. And since there is no commission action required, we will move on to the last item, staff communications. Joe, do you have anything else to, to add?
I don't think I do, thank you.
All right. Well, I'm really looking forward to next month and a particular application for a special use.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to be April.
Oh, okay.
I think it's going to be the, I think we'll have a citizen review in April and then come in, in May.
Which one is that?
QT.
Yeah, I, I, did, did Harvey mention it at the last commission meeting?
I've seen it, I've seen it being referred to, but I didn't see any.
Sure. For, for the benefit of the commission, the, the county is processing an application for a use permit for a U-Haul facility at the southwest corner of I-10 and Citrus Road. What looks like might be in the city of Goodyear is, is actually in the county island. And so they have met with us on a couple of occasions. We have communicated our concerns about the design of the facility, the architecture of the facility, and the pole sign that they intend to erect, which is apparently indicative of their branding, and they are reluctant to change. So as Mr. Gelsner points out, since it is a county island, all we can do is communicate our concerns. It, it will be up to the County Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Supervisors to accept or reject that application.
Um, is, and, and I don't know if, if council has taken any formal position on that, but is that something that, that we could generally take a look at and take a, a position as, as the commission to forward our comments to the county as part of that process? Or is that just not done?
I, I don't know that it's, that it has been done in the past by the commission. The council certainly has weighed in on issues such like Arizona Motorsports, when it was going in up there, passed a resolution of, you know, non-support for that particular use, which was then promptly approved anyway. So you kind of have some mixed emotions about whether or not you're going to get listened to, but it's, it's something we can consider. We have communicated the information to the council. I have not heard back anything specifically of that, that the council wants to take a formal position on it. But we basically, from a staff level, had communicated our concerns and encouraged them to try to do better, but I'm not optimistic.
And do we know when, when it's scheduled for, for a vote?
I have not yet received notice of when they were, when they have their hearing. So, no, I don't know. And along the same lines, as long as Mr. Gelsner prompted my memory now, that we, we received an application, um, notice as well for a billboard to be erected within the city of Goodyear on railroad property, which is in a county island, off of MC-85 and Cotton Lane. So while our regulations do not allow billboards in the city, the county does not preclude them. So that'll be another one we'll be taking a hard look at.
Is it a static or a digital?
I, you know, I didn't read it thoroughly enough to get the sense of whether it's static or not. All right.
Anything else for the, go to the order? All right, we're adjourned.